Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Sharon Alvi-Johnson and I am proud to be designated to lead tonight's town hall. Today will be an engaging discussion with members and representatives from Grenada. And we wanted to use this opportunity to not only celebrate Grenada's 50th anniversary, let's do a round of applause for our 50th anniversary. Hope that you take this opportunity to post questions, share things that are on your mind around Grenada, the state of Grenada, PT Marknik and Caracu. And let this be a very engaging evening tonight, right? And so tonight, I'll be joined on the stage by the Honorable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada, PT Marknik and Caracu. We will also be joined by the Honorable Joseph Andal, Minister of Foreign Affairs. Ambassador Talley Francis, Ambassador and Permanent Resident, Representative, excuse me, of the Embassy of Grenada to the United States, who hosted this fabulous event tonight. And Ambassador Andrea St. Bernard, Special Envoy for Development and Investment in the Office of the Prime Minister. And so I invite these members to the stage. And while I have your attention, I do want to acknowledge Congresswoman Barbara Lee, who is joining us. Welcome to all citizens of Grenada, residents of the Friends of Grenada, residents here locally from the DMV. Welcome. So may I invite the ones just to the stage? And at this time, I invite Agnes Henry to open up with prayer.
Most holy and almighty God, we come before you today in thanksgiving for your many blessings. We thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for this opportunity for communion and fellowship. We thank you also for our challenges because even in the valley, Lord, you are still good. And we can learn from the barrels that confront us. Remove all sources and places in our beings where hatred, pride, divisiveness and unforgiveness reside. And fill us with love, fill us with humility, forgiveness and a spirit of unity. For we long to be one people, one family, one nation. We ask you, Lord, to bless this evening's proceedings with order and fellowship as we continue our efforts to rebuild and advance. We raise this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Every day, the land of ours, we pledge ourselves to be heads and hearts in unity to reach our destiny. Ever conscious of God, we proud of heritage. We believe in faith and courage, aspire build and friends. As one people, one family, God bless our nation.
Honorable Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell, Honorable Foreign Minister Joseph Andal, Ambassador Andrea St. Bernard, Distinguished Congresswoman Barbara Lee, fellow diaspora members of Grenada and friends of Grenada present. Thank you very much for finding the way and the time and the rain and the weather to be with us this evening. I made these welcome remarks feeling the warmth of the presence of our Prime Minister who is with us for the first time this year and is with us carving the time out in a very busy schedule to be with us today and tomorrow in the DMV. The Grenada Cultural and Social Association, the Grenada United in Virginia Group, Grenada International Uplift Corporation, Helping Hands Summer Crew, are some Prime Ministers of the main diaspora groups that work tirelessly to ensure that the link between Grenada and the DMV diaspora, as well as individuals and families in Grenada and those of us here Grenadians and friends in the DMV are ever connected and ever close. It gives me honor to be the one welcoming you here today, Prime Minister, because another ambassador would not be able to say that he was the first to welcome you to the DMV. And this evening, as we gather, my friends, it's also in celebration of the 50th anniversary of independence. We did what we usually do in February and in March. And then we saved the time that the Prime Minister will be here to celebrate as well. I want to thank you all for being here and to say that the effort this evening is for engagement and for a discussion with our leader. The presence of the Prime Minister reminds us of the strength and leadership that has guided our nation through the last two years and has brought us through difficult moments, not least among them, Beryl. Not least among them, the COVID. And that builds upon the strength of leadership that our country has seen working through resiliently the 50 years of independence. For this, Prime Minister, we thank you as well. I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to all of you again for being here this evening and look forward to an engaging discussion with Prime Minister Mitchell. Thank you very much.
And so at this time, I invite the Honorable Joseph Andal, Minister of Foreign Affairs, to bring readings.
Thank you very much, Madame Moderator, Prime Minister Honorable Deacon Mitchell, Ambassador Andrea St. Bernard, Congresswoman and honorary Grenadian Barbara Lee, members of your staff, members of the traveling delegation, members of the embassy staff, Grenadians, friends of Grenada. Good evening to all former ambassadors, no attached to the Organization of American States, Yoland Smith. Good to see you here. Welcome. Good evening. This evening is more about you than about us. So I will not be giving a speech, but just to make a few brief remarks. One of the hallmarks of our government is a deliberate effort to engage our people at home and in the diaspora. We do it sometimes through formal town hall meetings. We do it through informal on-the-block sessions at the different villages throughout Hidimakna, Caracu and Grenada. We have done it in a couple major cities in North America. And tonight is the turn of the DC, Virginia, Maryland area to host one of our regular town hall meetings. We do not see the diaspora as Grenadians who live abroad and occasionally send a barrel or send something via Western Union or Madagascar. For us, it's an organic relationship. It's one where we strive to make it symbiotic. You have quite a lot to offer to us. And through the wonders of modern technology, you do not necessarily have to be home physically in order to make your contribution. In fact, one of the first things we did was to ensure that Grenadians living abroad had the opportunity to participate directly in the governance process. For example, when the opportunity came up to appoint members to the different statutory boards and other par-state entities, we ensured that the process was open to Grenadians in every nook and cranny of the world. And it was not just an exercise in tokenism, but a genuine effort to engage our citizens who reside abroad. And we are very happy and proud to see that currently quite a number of Grenadians living abroad are serving on these boards. In fact, some of them are even chairing the boards. So our commitment to you is genuine and ongoing. We appreciate the fact that in spite of not being physically present among us back home, your thoughts and your actions always take us into consideration. And the recent passage of Hurricane Barrett was testament to your love for and commitment to your homeland. You're always there with us and for us. And we want to be and do the same for you. So as we have this encounter this evening, we hope and expect that it will be very interactive, that you will throw the hard questions at us, you will make your observations, your recommendations. They will be duly taken on board. And this is not an episodic event, but one that is the beginning of a long-lasting and continuous relationship between this government and our diaspora. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. And at this time, I invite Her Excellency Andrea St. Bernard, Special Envoy, sorry, Special Envoy for Development and Investment in the Office of the Prime Minister. Join us, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will stand on protocols established, but I would like to very much thank Ambassador Francis for inviting us and for organizing this evening. Good evening to distinguished guests, Congresswomen, and good evening, brothers and sisters all. It is quite a pleasure to be here with you in DC. So I am introduced as Ambassador Special Envoy for Development and Investment, which may not mean a whole lot. But I want you to know that I am a daughter of the soil, born in Grenada. But I grew up in the diaspora. And I can attest that my heart never left Grenada. I am a returned national. I live now in Grenada for quite some time. And I've thrown my whole self and heart into doing all that I can to help advance and move Grenada forward with the wonderful administration led by the Honorable Deacon Mitchell. So I am a testament to the energy, the love and the devotion that lives in the diaspora, that remains steadfast and committed to seeing development in Grenada. And also to the reality that so many of us in the diaspora consider Grenada home and want to have the opportunity to always claim it as home, whether we're residing in Grenada or elsewhere. I look forward to the engagement with you this evening. It is quite a pleasure for us to have the opportunity to do town hall engagements throughout the land in Grenada, but also with the diaspora. One thing that we certainly know and acknowledge and are working on is finding ways to harness the strength, the brilliance, the exceptional expertise and experience of our people in the diaspora. So it's essential to Grenada, to the continuing development of Grenada, to the achievement and accomplishment of the many ambitious plans that we have, that we hear from you, that you contribute to and give us all that you have to offer. We are very much interested in hearing your thoughts, your ideas. And also, we're here to give you the news of things happening at home. So it's very much a pleasure to be here. And I look very much forward to the engagement this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, please. Thank you very much. His Excellency Ambassador Talley Francis, Honorable Joseph Andal, Minister for Foreign Affairs and Member of Parliament for St. Patrick West. Just in case there are any St. Patrick Westians in the house. Her Excellency Andrea St. Bernard, members of the Grenada delegation who are visiting with us as part of the delegation, Congresswoman Barbara Lee. Permit me, ladies and gentlemen, to say a little bit about her because she has to leave shortly. I actually spent probably 45 minutes on the phone with her on Thursday. And I told her I'd be here in DC today and tomorrow. And testimony to your commitment to Grenada is the fact that she is here in person despite your extreme hectic schedules to support Grenada. I first met her in person at the home of Ambassador Desmond Williams. And if you know Ambassador Desmond Williams, you know she is a torch of female strength, a torch of Grenadian patriotism. And her friendship with Congresswoman Lee goes a long, long way back. And so that should tell you how long Congresswoman Lee has been a champion for Grenada and Grenadian causes. So I want to use the opportunity to thank you personally for having supported Grenada for in excess of four decades. So I'm clearly giving away how long you've been championing Grenada. And we continue to do so today just as passionately as you've had from the beginning. So on behalf of Grenadians in the diaspora, on behalf of Grenadians in Grenada and everywhere, I really want to take this opportunity to say our profound gratitude and appreciation for your continued support and love of Grenada. Thank you very much. Other distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I recognize all four ambassadors with us this evening. Thank you for being here and thank you for your continued support. I am really delighted to be here with you this evening. It's been a long time coming. And so sometimes good things take a little longer to happen. So I want to start first by really appreciating the fact that in the slightly overpassed and rainy weather on a Tuesday evening, you've taken your time and you made the choice to join us here today to engage in this stall and to share, to learn, to make recommendations. And I'm sure there may be some criticism in between there that would be helpful in ensuring that we can continue to make Grenada go up, up, up as we celebrate our 50th anniversary as a proud and independent nation. So I want to start by offering congratulations to you, fellow Grenadians and Friends of Grenada and honored Grenadians, for the wonderful country that we've all contributed towards building over the last 50 years. And for those of you who are in the diaspora, make no doubt about it, you don't have to be physically on the trial and stake to have contributed immensely to the growth and development of Grenada. And so I think we can start by asking you to give yourself a round of applause for the contributions that you have made to our development over the last 50 years. I feel truly honored to be tasked with political leadership of Grenada during this year of marking its 50th anniversary of independence. We are one of a little less than 200 nations that are independent nations. So the ability to have a national identity, a Grenadian-ness, is not something that I take for granted. And I don't think it is something that as Grenadians we should take for granted. There are millions of people in the world who are stateless, who are still fighting for that right to determine their own political, social, economic destiny. And so we really owe a significant debt of gratitude to our forefathers or forebears who took the bold step to ensure that nationhood and statehood was bestowed upon us. And so that 50 years later, we can mark this momentous occasion. And so for me, it is really an honor and a privilege to be leading a small country that has done incredible things for its citizens and for the world at large over the last 50 years. And so I was deeply humbled and honored to have the opportunity to lead Grenada throughout the last two years and in particular to celebrate with all Grenadians our 50th anniversary of independence. So thank you for playing your parts over the several months that we've marked and celebrated this occasion. It's been a year-long celebration, which we started in October last year. And we're culminating in October this year with some celebrations in the Virgin Parish of St. David, which I'm honored to be the member of Parliament for. To that extent, we say the best for us. So if you didn't get the opportunity to come home during February or any of the other months, when the other parishes also put on their events, I'm taking the opportunity to invite you to come down in October. As you know, October is a very historic and significant month for us in Grenada. And it's also my birth month. So it's a good opportunity to be in Grenada to celebrate the culmination of our 50th anniversary of independence. So thank you again for celebrating that with us. I want to start, I am mindful that there are several tens of you and there are only three or four of us on stage. So Ambassador Francis, feel free to stop if any time, if I'm going on too much, so that we can give the opportunity to members to intervene and make sure it's a real town hall. But I want to just give a couple of quick pointers. And I want to start first of all, I think, by expressing our profound gratitude and appreciation for the tremendous support shown by the diaspora and by you here in particular in supporting the relief efforts to Grenadians, particularly in Karakna, PT Marknik and the north of the island arising from Hurricane Barrett. The diaspora was galvanized immediately. Your advocacy, your actions, your gathering, collecting, buying, supplying, shipping, relief supplies went a significant way in ensuring that our immediate responses to this catastrophic event was quick. It was effective and helped many of our citizens to be able to rebound and rebound quickly. And it just goes to show the power of the diaspora in ensuring that when we face challenges or disasters, that we can rely on to really come to the aid and assistance of our brothers and sisters in their time of greatest need. And so I really want to start by expressing my profound appreciation again for the support and the continued support. Because the recovery process in Caracu and PT Marknik in particular is going to be a long and difficult one. And we know many of you are still making significant efforts in helping our brothers and sisters in PM and Caracu. So thank you again for that. And I'd ask again that you give yourselves a round of applause for the tremendous work that you've done. I want to just talk a little bit about the impact of climate change and hurricanes and other disasters on Grenada and by extension, small island developing states. And the need for us in the diaspora to appreciate the role that we can play in the advocacy that is required in ensuring that the right policies and the right financing to address this significant challenge. Because, you know, existential threat is a phrase that is used often. And oftentimes, it's used in situations where miners created the threat, whether it's the threat of famine, whether it's the threat of war, whether it's the threat of displacement, whether it's the threat caused by political instability. In the context of Grenada and the Caribbean, we are not facing an existential threat. We are living the reality of the consequences of cataclysmic climate challenges. And I just want to put in context that on the 1st of July, Hurricane Barrett, which was the fastest and strongest storm to develop that early on record, went directly over Karakna, PT Marknik as a category four storm. Afternoon, it was actually intense inside and became a category five storm. Now, almost two weeks before that, Grenada, Karakna, PT Marknik was in the midst of a six-month drought unprecedented in 15 years. We were having significant wildfires in areas such as Bolio, Granitán. Several acreage was under fire because of the intensity and the dry weather conditions. And no sooner as the clouds started forming and the rain started coming and we were thanking God for ending what could have been another cataclysmic and terrible episode, we then had another one two weeks later in the form of Hurricane Barrett. And I'm saying this to point out the fact that it is not just the hurricane season that is posing a threat to our way of life. It is the fact that climate change is posing and is wreaking significant havoc on small island developing states, on Caribbean nations, on Pacific islands. And this is something that is critical. It's not something that is going to happen in the future. It is something that is happening now and has the risk of significantly retarding or developing. And so this is not a dream. This is a lived nightmare. And I say this because when I went to Karakna, PT Marknik, the day after the storm, they got a shock that the citizens of Karakna, PT Marknik, that you can see on their face, that they still live it. The fact that you've worked hard, you've done all the right things, you've educated your children, you've saved your money, you've built your home. And in 13 minutes, all of it is gone. And so the consequences of having to live with this is not something that I wish on anyone. And it is not something that we should wish on anyone. I took my son up a couple of days after so that he could see. Because on television, sometimes destruction appears romantic. It appears like a movie. And for the entire journey, he was silent. And when I asked him what his thoughts were, he actually simply said, "I would not wish this on my worst enemy." And I say this to say that a 16, 17-year-old could understand that this is a reality that they are going to face if we do not ensure that the pause that we understand the consequence of our actions and understand the need to ensure that we are better prepared and are better able to respond to the challenges that climate change is bringing for all of us. So it doesn't matter how much we pay down our debt. It doesn't matter how much we are good at our fiscal management. The reality is if in 45 minutes, you can have that level of almost complete destruction of your built civilization, it is going to be almost impossible to have sustained or sustainable development. And then you'll have the consequences. You'll have climate refugees. People are going to have to leave. You're going to have to find other places to earn a living and to build their lives. And we know what migration, immigration is an emotionally charged subject. So I say this because as Grenadians in the diaspora, I think it's important for you to appreciate the consequences of what we're facing. This is not a nice event. This year marks the 20th anniversary of Hurricane Island. And it's not lost on me that prior to that, the most significant hurricane we had was in 1955. And we had it in 2004. We had Emily, which was not that disruptive in 2005. And now in 2024, we had Barrett. So it means the time span for these very destructive events has been cut in half. And you're on the risk that you may be facing these types of storms every five or 10 years. And let's be real, if it's not Grenada, it's St. Lucia. If it's not St. Lucia, it's Dominica. If it's not Dominica, it's the Bahamas, the Tuxans keep us to be here. So as a region, that is the threat that we are dealing with everywhere. And it really does restrict our ability to grow, our ability to ensure that our young people feel optimistic, that they don't have to live through the cycle repeatedly. So we need all of the partnership, all the support and all the advocacy that we can get so that we can continue to make sure that our civilizations actually remain in that and continue to grow and develop and contribute towards the world civilization. But it's not all doom and gloom. I can assure you that all of us have been punched and we've been knocked down. We've gotten up and we will continue to charge ahead. We will continue to forge ahead. We will continue to march ahead. So I'm just going to give a quick update on where we are with our hurricane recovery. I'm happy to indicate that in the case of Karakna, PT Marknik, we expect to start schools on the 1st of October. on the 1st of October. And this is significant because it shows that one, despite the tragedy of the hurricane, that our students are already only missing one month of school at best, which would have been the September month. And so it shows that we've been able to galvanize our response and prioritize the needs of our children to make sure that they are not further disadvantaged by not getting the opportunities for education. For the students who have attended TMIC from the community college on Newro, the government has given all of them the opportunity to move to Grenada, and we are paying for their accommodation, we are providing them with food, clothing, laptops, everything that they require to ensure that they're completely resettled in Grenada and that they can continue their education at Newro and at TAMCC at no financial, economical cost to them and their parents. And that's how much we are prioritizing the education for young people, because we want to ensure that we will combat the tragedy by not doing everything to ensure that they have the opportunity to continue their education as a result of this. The hurricane produced, the hurricane produced an enormous amount of debris, and sometimes when these things happen, you know, there are things that you never really think about. But essentially, almost everything that people owned was turned into garbage. So you have vehicles that are completely destroyed, homes that have completely disappeared, an enormous amount of gardeners and zinc sheets strewn all over the streets, in some cases, concrete blocks, smashed windows, white goods, microwaves, refrigerators, washing machines, everything that you can think about was destroyed and strewn all over the island. And so the cleanup effort was critical, because if you don't clean up, you're almost waking up every day and you're giving the nightmare of the hurricane. And so we have mounted what we call Project Pristine to really restore the pristine beauty of Karakon Piti Marki. We have as many as 268 persons from Karakon Piti Marki employed in this process, and they've done a phenomenal job in cleaning up the debris, in ensuring that we can separate the waste, because we have gardeners, you have manufactured wood, you have natural vegetation, you have a lot of glass, you have plastics, you have fossil items, white goods, and the landfill in Karakon was not meant to take that level of debris, and Piti Marki doesn't have a landfill. So we had to move all the debris off Piti Marki by boat, that's a mammoth task, and we've successfully done so. And we are disaggregating the debris in Karakon, we stockpile them, and then we have baleys and so on coming to compact the debris and also to ship it off Karakon. We are also, the marine environment, as you may be aware, Karakon Piti Marki is obviously the centre of our fishing and trading economy in Grenada, and the boats were significantly damaged, hundreds of them either sunk or run aground, and so we also had to address that. And so we've retained a company from Trinidad and Tobago that has the necessary equipment that can physically take these boats out of the man roof, put them on land, so that we don't run the risk of oil leaks or other chemicals leaking into the environment and damaging the reefs or the beaches or the oceans. So again, that is a significant task, it's quite expensive, but we have to go through. The man roofs in Karakon were badly, badly damaged. If you land on the airport, the immediate environments around the airport shows that the man roof have turned white, they've literally been bleached to death because of the ferocity of the storm surge and the wind. So we are going to have to replant all of our man roofs to make sure that we can sustain the ecological and marine environment. That again is something that we are working on feverishly to ensure that we can preserve the marine environment in Karakon and Piti Marki. We've had significant support from Karakon and the region. Ghana in particular has sent fifty members of the Ghana Defence Force, a station in Karakon, and they've done tremendous work on supporting some of the built infrastructure, like repairing the police station, the magistrate's court, central government administrative buildings. So they've really helped us to be able to get development back up and running so that basic services can be provided to our citizens in Karakon and Piti Marki. The government has waived all taxes and duties on deportation of goods, boat building materials, as well as goods, fixtures, fittings, white goods that people would obviously need to be able to restart their lives. So everything is zeroated, and taxes or revenues are being collected by the government in relation to that. The government has also given to the Grenada Development Bank, which is in the chair, twenty-five million dollars to assist the business community in Karakon Piti Marki with restarting and reactivating their businesses. The twenty-five million is split between grant and very concessional loans. We don't expect that the interest rate will go beyond one percent. So we are doing everything we can to make sure that Karakon Piti Marki comes back better and is built back better. But we also have to take responsibility for some of our actions. A lot of the damage and destruction, particularly to the buildings, occurred because they were not built to code and because the construction was significantly substandard. And so one of the things we are going to have to incentivize is better behaviour that allows us to be better prepared and that allows us to be able to withstand and sustain these storms, because we can't stop them from coming. But we certainly can be better prepared. So as part of the process of having all of these concessions and providing the grant funding, we are going to try and incentivize behaviours that support building back better, that supports the use of hurricane straps, that ensures that building techniques are improved. We've started with some of our regional institutions like the Caribbean Disaster Emergency Management Agency to get engineers and technical people to come in to conduct the seminars with the contractors of the construction industry, and we are going to really have to insist that planning and building codes be followed. It's not going to be easy, because when you have high demand for labour because of the level of destruction, everybody turns to contractor overnight. And someone who was probably just a handyman or labourer then says he's a contractor. And for a desperate house owner who has to give her tapolins and water wetting them every time rain falls, it's quite easy to run the risk of saying to someone, "Yes, you're a contractor, I will hire you," and you end up in the same position that you're in. So it is something that we are working on, we are going to have a sort of one-stop-shop in Karakon Piti Marki where the GDP, the Berro Secretaryate, the Planning and Development Unit can streamline the processes to try and help our citizens in Karakon and Piti Marki build back better. The major challenge is housing, because there are significant labour shortages as a result of what has happened, and even if you bring labour in, there's no place for them to sit in Karakon and Piti Marki. So that significantly affects our ability to build back the homes as quickly as we would like and to build them to the standards that we need. So we are exploring the high probability that we are going to have to introduce modular homes on the island so that we can provide the type of homes in as quick a manner as possible to meet the needs of our brothers and sisters in Karakon and in St Patrick as well. We have had a number of engagements in South America, in Canada, in Europe, looking at the various companies that supply modular homes, and we are hoping that we can get them to build them to code, we are hoping we can get them to build them to do rainwater harvesting. Because in Karakon Piti Marki in particular, if you're from there, you know that most homes have systems that allows them to harvest the rain, to supply the homes with water, because we do not have any surface water in Karakon Piti Marki. And so we have to ensure that some of that indigenous knowledge that is used to enhance the way of life in Karakon Piti Marki is retained, even when we deploy modern building construction techniques that address the household situation there. In St Patrick, the Minister of Mobilisation, Implementation and Transformation, Honorable Andy Williams, is also leading a Build Back Better campaign to assist Grenadians whose homes were lost or damaged by Hurricane Berro and to ensure that the construction techniques, again, that are used, can ensure that the homes themselves are built back to a much higher standard and can withstand some of the challenges that we'll face in the future from climate-related events. So I would say all in all, despite the fact that we've been punched in the face and that we had bloody wounds as a result of Hurricane Berro, we've gotten up, we've held on to groups, we've dusted ourselves, and we are back in the boxing ring, and we intend to continue boxing, and we intend to continue winning the bout at the end of the day. And I want to thank the diaspora for the tremendous contribution that you've made towards ensuring that we can do so and that we can build back Grenada better. So thank you again for this. Beyond Hurricane Berro, there are a number of things that the government intends to continue charging forward with, and I'll give a brief overview of some of it. We are under no illusion that if we do not educate and continue to educate our citizens, that we will not be able to develop the country. And so we are heavily focused on ensuring that as much as possible, young people have access to education, and second, that we diversify the education offerings that we offer our citizens. So from an access point of view, as you may be aware, we've changed law to ensure that no young person leaves school before they're eighteen. Because what we have is a situation where many young persons are exiting high school at sixteen years old, and we have not yet developed the capacity to absorb all of them at Newro or TAMCC, and many of them fall through cracks and go looking for jobs. But at sixteen, they're not an adult, they have no ability to enter the contractual arrangements, they can't drive, they can't vote, and so it's quite unfair to expect them to be trusted into the world of work at sixteen and seventeen years old, mainly because they've been provided with primary school and secondary school education. So we changed law to make sure that the owners understand the state, to ensure that we continue educating our young men and women until they're eighteen. So that's one of the measures we've taken. We have eliminated the tuition fees at Newro and TAMCC, and I say eliminated here in the sense that the government has taken up the task of paying the tuition fees for Newro and TAMCC. TAMCC, so any Grenadian student who meets the matriculation requirements for TAMCC and Newro, they no longer have to pay any tuition costs to attend these institutions, because we are committed to making sure, we are committed to making sure that we don't have these financial barriers preventing our young men and women from accessing education. Sometimes it may seem insignificant, but for parents who have more than one child, a dollar makes a difference, three dollars makes a difference. So at our primary schools and our secondary schools, we have eliminated, meaning again, the government has absorbed the cost of the school feeding programme. So in the past, it was three dollars or four dollars contribution per day, but if you have two or three kids, that three dollars or five dollars becomes fifteen dollars a day, fifteen by five is a week, by four weeks in the month, and you will see that sometimes the parents are unable to provide it, and so the kids do not get a bucking. So again, the government has decided to absorb that cost, so all of our children who are at school have the opportunity to have a bucking provided by our schools, free of cost to the parents and to the children. And in relation to that, the government continues to support at the start of every school term through various initiatives like vouchers for books, vouchers for school uniforms, etc., to make sure that the less fortunate have the opportunity to ensure that their children in particular do not have barriers that restricts their access to education. Because there is no doubt that there is a direct relationship between access to education, access to quality education, and whether you get out of poverty or whether you remain in poverty. So we are doing everything as an administration to make sure that this generation of Grenadians get the opportunity to have access to education. But it's not just access, the type and the quality of education is absolutely critical. And one of the areas that we have arrested over the last two, three decades is technical and vocational education, skills training. And so the Ministry of Education, as well as other entities, have been tasked with ensuring that we can develop a technical and vocational strategy that mainstreams technical and vocational education from primary school all the way through secondary school and all the way through tertiary education. It is going to take some reengineering of the education system that we absolutely have to do. We've got a significant shortage of skills in Grenada, and it's across the board, from general construction to air conditioning, to refrigeration, to welding, we can go on and on, the marine sector, and even the hospitality sector. Many of our chefs and so on are all involved, and we have to be able to make sure that Grenadians get the opportunity to get higher-paying jobs in Grenada, so that they don't feel that the only option they have is to leave the country. And we need to ensure that our education system therefore is more aligned to the economic realities of what we face. The other aspect of this is technology, digitization and digital education. And so we are also very keen in ensuring that we support a comprehensive digital strategy to give our young men and women an opportunity to earn higher incomes without leaving Grenada. And I'll give an example of one of the pilots that we will be starting in October. The data has been validated, it shows that there are about, inaccessible about 5.6 million unfulfilled cybersecurity jobs worldwide, 5.6 million. So we have partnered with cyber nations and a Canadian supplier to train 100 Grenadians to become cybersecurity analysts. The government is footing the bill for this at a cost of $7,000 US dollars per training. The training is a four- to six-month training period. Once you successfully pass the training, the supplier who's doing the training has guaranteed us that they will find employment over a twelve-month period for the trainees. In fact, they've assured us that the trainees will be covered up because of the high demand for cybersecurity specialists. Now, the starting salaries for these kinds of jobs is three and four times the average starting salaries for even university-educated persons in the region. I graduated as a lawyer in 2002, and when I came back after seven years of toiling, my salary was 1,200 US per month, as a lawyer. The starting salaries for persons who are trained after six months in cybersecurity is 2,000, 5,000, 3,000, 4,000 US per month. And these are unfulfilled jobs where the demand for these skill sets is very high. So we have to ensure that we do not, simply because that's always been done, it's a lawyer, a policeman, a nurse, a doctor, and I'm not saying that we won't have a shortage of these either, we do. But we also have to give our young people the opportunity to look at alternative lucrative career paths that allows them to stay in Grenada but to earn significantly higher wages. That's the only way in which we will bring the foreign exchange that we talk about quite often into the country, which our citizens are having to leave. And the more money people earn, the more they will spend, the more they will invest, and the more the country will develop. So we see the digital skills as a critical pillar of all transformational agenda in terms of driving the education factor and driving economic growth and driving employment throughout the island. So the traditional areas, agriculture, tourism, these are areas we are still heavily focused on, because they provide immediate revenues and employment for the country, and growth in tourism continues. The number of flights coming to the island has continued to increase, the number of hotels being constructed has continued. In the case of St David's, Sixth Sense is open recently, Intercontinental is under construction, and we expect construction to finish in the next twelve to eighteen months. The Kauanabai site, which was previously the flamboyant hotel site, we expect that construction should commence in the first quarter of 2025, and in twelve to eighteen months thereafter, construction will conclude. There is construction taking place in St Patrick at the Lebrun site as well. So there is a lot of construction taking place on the island. It's exacerbated by the effects of Hurricane Berro, so we expect that the economy will continue to grow, we expect that there will be strong performances in the economy as well. And so we want to encourage the diaspora as well to take what, investing in Grenada. There are a lot of initiatives that we think you can play a significant role in, from the housing sector, because I hope for a fact that many Grenadians who want to return find it difficult to find a home, a house to buy, and supervising the construction of a house is a whole different challenge in and of itself. So we certainly think the housing sector is one sector that you can play a major role. I will speak about one final sector, and then I will sit and give you the opportunity to become interactive with us, which is the health sector. This is a sector that we knew was going to be challenging, and I'd be honest to say, I don't know that we have the level of improvement that we would have wished for in two years since our administration has taken into office. But I want to reassure the diaspora that we are absolutely committed to improving the sector. It is going to take a Herculean effort to do so, but we are committed to do so, because there really is no other alternative. If you're not a healthy nation, you will not have any nation to be proud of. So there were three areas of this. So there were three areas of this that we need to address. One is the human resource capacity. As you probably are aware, a lot of our nurses, a lot of our allied practitioners, a lot of our doctors are leaving and are migrating simply because obviously they've been paid better elsewhere. But that's not just a Grenada phenomenon. It's happening throughout the region, it's happening throughout the world. We have to address it by ourselves, paying our healthcare professionals better. But it's not just about paying, sometimes it's about treating people as well. And oftentimes, people leave not just because the salary is inadequate, but they leave if they do not feel valued, if they do not feel appreciated. And the system, the public sector system that governs the how the woman does its administrative work is not suited for the healthcare system. It is not responsible enough, it is not flexible enough. And in many instances, it disincentivizes our doctors and so on who go to train and come back from stage. Because if we continue with this very bureaucratic public administration system for the health sector, people continue to leave. And so it requires us to actually change the legal framework and to ensure that our doctors and nurses are dealt with using modern human resource management policies. That will require us to start to rise or create the hospitals and some of our primary healthcare facilities on a statutory one that is decoupled from the central government and the central government's administrative system. That will give us the management flexibility to be able to respond and to retain and hire and pay our doctors and nurses using much more modern incentive regimes. And we don't necessarily want the central government's built.